Sir McPherson, who will be moving down to the Valley, uh, the middle of July, so we are advertising for another position for our department. So it's nothing that the department did, it's just that's what she needs to do to be with her family. It's all best decisions she made, so that's what we are with us for now.
Thank you. Chief Jackson, um, I'm going to move right in rather than ask, uh, Randy for a report, I'm going to move right on into, uh, old business item, a discussion possible action regarding the budget. Randy, you have anything to update us on?
Um, the only thing we were gonna talk about tonight, um, we've been having talks with the Chamber. They really wanted to know what was happening with that $10,000. And then, along with that, the Historical Society is, um, asking for some more money. And they're, they're basically just, um, stating that a couple of years ago, they used to get $1,200 a month. They now only get $900 a month. And it's really hard for them to make a budget with that person that they, um, that they hire for the desk there. And so they're, they're asking to move that amount back to the $1,200 a month. So if we did that, the, if you look on page 13 on the budget, um, line item 006, 014, 5057, that would be that 32-4, uh, going to the Historical Society. So, um, the updated budget that I gave you included that, but it's, it's up to you guys. And then, um, we don't have, or we haven't gotten word from the county yet on whether they'll pay for that $10,000 or not. So until we know that, line item 5052 is up to 16-4 to cover that HVAC. So, uh, I don't know, Yvonne was really wanting a concrete number, I think, for their budget. But we've been trying to talk to the county and we haven't had any, we don't know if they're gonna cover it or not. So, um, Historical Society is here, if you guys have any questions with them. Um, like I said, this budget, the second preliminary that I gave you guys, does have that increase in there. And it's just how, they're having a hard time meeting it. They're, they're meeting the salary, but when it comes to the EREs, they're having a little tough time there. So, um, talking with Vic, he said if we bump that 900 back to the 12, then they would, that would cover it. And they'd be, they'd be good with that.
That's the Historic Society contribution?
Yeah, so, so that would bump that up. Currently, we pay them 28-8.
You mean 2700?
Well, it's 18,000 for the front desk and then 10-8 for the Historical Society portion of it. So if we did, we'd leave the 18 and then bump that up to the 1,200. So that'd give them the 32-4 from the 28-8 that we currently do, currently do.
And the 47,000 for the?
For the, for the Chamber.
And that's what we discussed before?
Yeah, and then the, the additional 10 pending the county.
So what we agreed with them before was 57?
57, yeah, if the 10 with the county comes through.
Because that's picking up the HVAC?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So we're still up in there on the county's contribution?
Right.
I'd say we stick with 57 with the Chamber and, since that's what we agreed on before. We'll just have to take the 10 out of general fund somewhere.
Okay.
And I did contact the county manager, and so he is well aware that, uh, the summertime isn't a problem. They got the air conditioning half working.
Yeah.
But the heater half isn't any good and they're a combination unit. So, uh, I told him he needs to plan on it.
Are you gonna, are you gonna 57 for the Chamber? And that's what I'd like to hear.
So, okay, we'll make that a hard number then.
Okay.
I had a question, not about the, the budget specifically, but it's tied in. I was reading through the budget and I was talking, looking at some of the projected capital items five years down the road. And I noticed there were some dollar signs and some figures in that. I don't even remember what page I was on. I just want council to be, you know, cognizant of our capital expenses, uh, demands down the road for, for maintaining the city. And one of the questions I had was, you know, even though it's not this year's budget, you know, it, it came to mind on, um, Sun Valley Water System and the, uh, the expense to the city. Can you kind of review what it is in this budget, what it's costing for the Sun Valley system?
Since manager Ali's been here, we've kind of lumped it all together. So I, I don't have concrete numbers on that as far as projections go. Uh, the page we're talking about is page 37. We actually don't have a number on it, 'cause it, it was just additional information. But we are looking at, if you guys want that information, we could, we could pull some, try to pull some information.
Well, I don't want to, you know, detract you from trying to pull the budget together, but I just want the council to be looking ahead and looking at things we have to face in the future.
Um, historically, we've collected about, I want to say 25,000, and we spend over 50,000 doing that. And that's, that's just maintaining. So, we are looking at doing telemetry and a new well out there and looping some dead ends at Sun Valley. And maybe, um, a new tank too. So, one of the tanks out there is, is getting pretty rusted. So we don't have a whole lot of dollar, dollar amounts on there, but, but those are, uh, four or five things out there that, that we need to start thinking about. The, um, the telemetry, we've already kind of started working on that right now, just because we, we've installed it on our water in town. And it's pretty easy to just, uh, bounce it over to Sun Valley. So Norm is already working on that to piggyback off of what we're doing with the water. So the big one is gonna be the, uh, new tank and new well. And then the loops and, uh, shut-off valves. Loops, the, looping the dead ends may, that might be way, way, way away from here. 'Cause it might not be in our lifetime, just because the lines are so far apart. One house, sometimes the meter's a mile away from the house. So to loop that could be really, it, it might not ever be cost-effective. So, but right now, what we do to, to, um, to make sure the water stays within, in the good results, is we flush the hydrants. So anytime we have, uh, dead ends, we have to flush those hydrants to make sure the water, the water, the residual stays clean.
And can you tell them how much we have in the water department's budget for improvement?
Oh, yeah.
We also have, we also have an amount?
Too far beyond the original subject we were talking about, that, that couple of questions or comments, I guess. First of all, on that subject, how many customers do we have, uh?
60.
Yeah.
Pretty close, it's 60, I think. I think we have 1,700 accounts and 60 of them are Sun Valley. Am I close?
Yeah, you're, you're close.
Um, the subject I want to talk about is the Historical Society. You know, we have a, a lot of museums around the area that have people hired to work in them. We're, we're basically going on the historical side with, um, volunteer labor, and they've been doing a great job. But at some point, and I believe we've arrived at a point long before, we need to hire, um, at least a part-time director, uh, that can make us, maybe go up a couple of steps. If we have 16,000 people stopping in there, and I realize some are just getting there for the information, but if they're stopping there, that's a significant number of visitors to the city. They're coming here because of that, um, because of that courthouse. It's one of the, one of the best assets we have in the city. If we have something that'll cause people to stay longer or refer us or bring more people in, it can only, uh, help our bottom line, because if they're here, they're buying lunch or staying in hotels or spending some money, we, we get more, um, more, uh, sales tax. And I know the Historical Society didn't ask for it. I'm just putting it out there that we oughta, we oughta get to the point where we can afford that and, and do that right.
That's a valid point. Now, did I understand Councilman Carlisle's comment that we take the 10,000 for the furnace somewhere out of the general fund?
Yes.
So that would?
Well, we've got, we've got 6,400 left in there.
That might accommodate?
For, for the lodgers, and then we take whatever extra to, to the general fund.
So would we have anything that possibly could come out this year if we had to?
I don't know, it depends on how much you're willing to hire a director. And we got Kathleen on staff too.
Vic, do you remember what the, uh, figures you're talking about for a part-time director?
You're talking to who? Me?
Yes.
Actually, director, if, we're, we're more in line with a clerk position or even a volunteer position to train them. And then, if, once they learn the system, then we can advertise for a director. 'Cause you don't wanna hire a director that's not qualified and you don't know until they get there and learn our system, really. So, we're talking more of a clerk position that?
Might involve?
Be evaluated later, Dayton, and, so it may be, you know, a month or a year, I don't know.
Randy and I have a couple of ideas we wanna hash out. Let us get back with you on that at our next meeting, can we?
Okay.
All right? 'Cause I think we might have an answer that might help on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Councilman Carlisle, do you have any other questions regarding the budget? Regarding the budget? Councilman Maxwell, um, do you have any questions regarding the budget while you're on the phone?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you guys wanna tackle, so everybody's agreed on lodgers then? Do you guys wanna tackle a couple more, or you guys wanna? Yep, okay. Well, since we're on the water department, let's just go ahead and skip to that. So that is going to start on pre, 27, right? Okay, uh, well, we can start out, 25 is the revenues. And if the second, so all of these, uh, actuals are through April now. So that's projected through the June. So those are, um, so, so we're looking good on our revenues. We don't see any issues there. Sanitation department on page 26, the big one is gonna be the contract services. Um, that's, that is gonna be almost a 26% increase on our, it's, uh, well, it's Blue Hills now. That, it was Waste Management, and now that's gonna go to Blue Hills. So that amount is going from 330 to 386 to, uh, account for that increase for, for Blue Hills, taking over our transfer site.
Not the transfer site, the waste we take from the transfer site.
Yeah, the waste we take from the transfer site. That's basically, that's basically it. There's a couple of numbers, uh, back and forth. We, we lowered, uh, vehicle parts and maintenance because we don't have the, the trucks that, um, that we had before when we were running our truck services. But utilities are gonna go up a little bit. So whatever we saved on that is going to utilities. And then plus the additional for, uh, Blue Hills. Any other questions there?
This has no change in personnel on this, this one. This still maintains us with, uh, four, four people, and, uh, so that's, uh, Big O, Tim Austin, Frank Rashid, and Sam Hollins. And Frank and Sam, even though they're over in sanitation, every time we do a pour, they're, they're helping us.
And then Sam Hollins is actually sweeping streets a couple of days a week too. So Frank runs a transfer site, uh, Tim runs, I mean, excuse me, uh, Frank runs a recycle center pretty much all the time. Tim runs the transfer site, and then O oversees it, and then Sam is actually running the sweeper when he's free. So we're, that's why you still have some manpower, even though we're doing privatized a bunch of it.
And both Frank and Sam do, do pour concrete with this.
And, and we take on all the roll-offs when customers have a request for a large roll-off. They go pick those and deliver those and stuff like that, so.
Okay, uh, page 27. Um, right there, if you go down to the very bottom, line item 5070, we got, uh, 60,000 in it next year to do upgrades, um, in the water department. And when we're talking water, we're talking about Sun Valley too. So, so right there, that number 60,000 is what we can do, um, to improve Sun Valley or do things here, so.
As well as the 27,000 up on line 5026, am I correct?
5026.
5026 has, uh, $27,000 that we use for like parts and, and things that go wrong. So that's 27,000. And then there's one other line item, I thought it was, uh, oh, repairs and maintenance. 5052 has a little bit in it too, $5,000. So between all of those, and again, Sun Valley is included in this, one of our priorities probably, our water system's getting in pretty good shape. We've redone a bunch of our lift stations, our well houses are all new. We updated the wells, putting in BFDs, but, uh, we are gonna have to address a well out of Sun Valley. So that could be the beginning stage of next year, uh, because that is one of our top priorities in my mind.
Most of the time when we do, um, repairs or, uh, construct, construction projects in-house, we buy the, we just buy the materials. So that's where that 27,000 comes into play. So, uh, next week when we start doing, um, that Forest Main Inferno Park School, all we're really needing to do is tear that up and, and put new piping in there. So we'll be just buying the materials for that.
And this budget has the same number of personnel that we have at the present time. Armando, Louis, Oscar, Marcos, Mike, and?
For water.
That's, oh, and Pat Nichols. Pat Nichols is out of it too, and Pat Nichols. So, the, there's no change in personnel on the, on the dollar amount on personnel. And we might be investigating a few changes in that area too later on, but it'll go the other direction. It won't be an increase.
And so that, as we look through these budgets too, uh, these budgets are currently as it sets, so Jean is still in there. So it's, that could go down, depending on which officer chief hires. If you hire one with more experience, we may have to pay him more, whatever. But most of the time through attrition, I would say on average, you, you lose two or three people. So this budget represents keeping those people, but we probably won't refill them. So, um, when that happens through the year, that's, that's our earned savings is what Ray, uh, Ray calls it. And most of the time, that's what goes into the extra roads. Any, any questions in, in water? Okay, uh, flip over to page 28, wastewater. Uh, there again, we have, on the bottom page, we have another 60 for infrastructure. And basically, I, that infrastructure could go either way, 'cause it's in the utility department. I just split it, 60 in water and 60 in wastewater. But since, uh, most of our lift stations are, are in good repair now after this year, some of that 60 may be able to be used towards, uh, Sun Valley, the new wells, or, or whatever we may need in water. So, but it, but as far, as far as the budget goes, it's in there. And so bottom, bottom line is, is we have 120,000 to do major upgrades in that. And there again, 5026, we have that same 27,000, uh, to do mainly materials and supplies.
A lot of UV lights on, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot of, yeah, actually, half of that is UV light. So, uh, there again, a lot of this stuff we're doing in-house. We're not hiring a company to come do it. So we're saving a lot of money. A lot of that, a lot of times it's just piping that we're buying the materials and supplies and putting it in the ground. And there was one other thing, oh, utilities increased, is increasing quite a bit on that. But that number may change again too, as we get towards the end of the year. Norm is really, I think I mentioned it last time, Norm is really starting to, to, uh, to monitor all the pumps. So this last year, as he's been getting them online, he's been collecting data, um, peak times and so forth. And so he's starting to zero in on that data to make everything run more efficient. So, we haven't seen a whole lot of savings yet on all of those VFDs and stuff, because we haven't been utilizing, utilizing them as much as, as we could. So as they get online through the telemetry, we're gonna, we oughta start seeing, uh, savings there. Same thing, we've got 5,000 on repairs and maintenance and another eight for machinery equipment for pumps and lift stations.
I want to interrupt Randy too. We have made a really, uh, concentrated effort, both not only in the water department, in the wastewater department at the treatment plant. We've replaced pumps, uh, we pulled great big pumps that are gonna be rebuilt. So we're trying to get all of those pumps, motors, valves, everything that needs to be replaced that hasn't been. Even our backups, we're trying to get them up and running. We, we won't have any surprises, uh, in the middle of the night. We've been making the same effort that we did in the water department at the treatment plant as well.
And a couple of those pumps that, they're, um, one of the F1 pumps, I think was a?
11, 12 grand?
Yeah, 12 grand. But it's, it hasn't been working for years. So, so two small pumps are doing what one big one should be doing. And the small pump should be the backups, and we've been using the small pump. So, but really, it's been kind, those kind of cases everywhere. Where we're going ahead and trying to get the big ones up and running, those would be running more efficient than running two small ones, than using the small ones as backups. So that's a, a, a good example at the treatment plant.
We have spent a considerable amount of money upgrading our existing facilities just to get them at 100% empty. Well, I'd take, I'd take 80%, not even 100, but we are spending it to get it there.
And then the, the last big item there is, um, the debt service on the treatment plant. So that's the 342, and then the interest is 65. And, um, that comes from the 1% transfer that we transfer from the general fund into that. Any, any other questions on that? Okay, if you go to page 29, 'cause this always gets brought up. If you look on the bottom right-hand corner, that tells you that we, one, we balance. And number two, the 101,000 in sanitation is a negative. The 93,008, 92 in water, and then the 7,500 is, um, out of wastewater. What those three numbers tell you is sanitation's losing money, water's making money, and wastewater's making a little money. But in the end, they all bounce to zero. So there's, there's always been a question of who props who. But bottom line is, is balance zero. And we run a utility fund. So even though they're in, in three separate departments, it is a fund. And, um, we, we try to balance it out the best we can.
By law, you have to.
Yeah.
On an enterprise bank.
So if anybody ever asks you questions, right now, uh, the water, mainly the water department is, is, uh, holding up the, the other two. Do you guys wanna keep on going? All right, the next one is, uh, we'll just hit page 30, which is impound fees. That's chief's revenue for, uh, any impounded vehicles. Uh, we collect revenue off of those. And so basically, I just budget the fund balance plus, uh, whatever we're expecting next year. So, uh, if we continue on the path that we're getting, we, we, chief has a budget of about eight grand in that department.
Uh-huh, okay.
Did you have any questions, Myron?
No, I don't.
Okay. Uh, page 31 is HERF funds. So the, the 604,000 is what we're projected to get from the state. That is an increase of, I think the first number was 570,000, and now they bumped it up to 30. So when the, the governor passed their budget and gave, restored some HERF monies back, it was only 30,000. So we're grateful, but still not enough.
Okay.
So, um, and then if you go down, the 4794, that's the amount transferred from general fund into HERF. Now, 500,000 of that is gonna be the earned savings that, that we can have through, through the general fund, through attrition and those kind of sa, things. And that's the amount that the voters approved, is that 500,000, okay? So without that 500,000, 313, 201 is coming from the general fund to do streets. Okay, is that, is that clear?
Okay.
So if you go to page, um, 32, uh, everything's staying the same. 363, 350 is the materials and supplies that we, we'll spend on concrete.
That's line item 5026.
5026. And if you go down to 5058, there's that 500,000 that we got from the, the voters' approval. So what will happen is, if we go over that 363, 350 in roads or in concrete, then we'll start taking it out of that 500,000 up to whatever revenue, extra revenue we have in the general fund. So even though, I mean, we have the money, so, but we don't necessarily wanna take that 500,000 out of savings either. So, uh, as we, um, get savings through the general fund, then those transfers from the general fund will increase into the HERF. Does that make sense?
Let, let me make this clear, because it's a little confusing again for the benefit of the public. We're not planning, even though we got the $500,000 override passed, this will be earned, money will be spent. There's a good chance we won't, we won't go into savings, which is, if we don't have to. But that'll allow us to do that. So we don't wanna tap into our savings.
So, so, um, there again, so that number is that 500,000, uh, the voters, uh, voted on it for streets. So that's the number that will be ticking down, um, as we go over. And that number, you'll also find on that sheet that balances to the state imposed limit. So let me show you that, just, just so you're aware, to make sure we don't go over our limit. So if you go to page seven, there again, bottom right-hand corner, I have the state imposed limit of 6.8 million, plus the 500,000, okay? So that amount comes down, um, in increments as we spend it. So it's not gonna come down if we don't spend it. So in other words, um, we're gonna stay under that limit whether we spend it or not. Right? So right now, with this budget in your hand, uh, we're projected to, to be $5,165 under the state imposed limit. And we'll be clean. Any other questions there?
Randy, you're doing a good job.
All right, thank you. It, it's a lot, and I know it's confusing, but we, but as we do this, we try to be as transparent as we can. So that's why the 500 kind of sticks out. And then it, on page seven where it balances to the state imposed, it sticks out. So that way, there's no questions or, or concern. Well, there might be questions, but hopefully it, it explains it pretty well.
So Randy, um, we need to tentatively approve this budget when?
Um, it's not gonna be until June. I, I believe it's the third Monday in June. Let me get that real quick before I tell you something different. So we, we can have another work session. We had another work session planned for, uh, June 3rd if needed, and June 10th if needed, and June 24th if needed. The June 10th and June 24th meetings are regular meetings. And then, so the June 3rd meeting is just a special meeting if you guys wanted to have one, if there's more questions. So the tentative, um, it, we don't have to dump the tentative until July 8th. And that's at a regular meeting. So we do have a, a little bit of time. So, we do have a little bit of time.
Now, on the tentative, can we adopt it sooner?
We can adopt it sooner.
So, the tentative, what I always try to do is adopt the tentative by the end of June, our last meeting in June. That way, we'll have an operating budget for July, and we don't have to have a couple weeks limbo period. The final budget is mandated, you have to adopt it on the date, when is it, in August or something?
Yeah. I would prefer to do that.
I would too. So, we should shoot for June, the last meeting in June to adopt it.
And usually, it usually comes into June, your numbers are pretty strong anyway. So, I'm pretty confident with my numbers here now, but come June, that allows me to get my numbers in, and then you're only worried about the June month flux. So, the numbers are pretty strong, so there's not going to be any too big of changes. And the good thing about a tentative is, once you adopt the tentative, you can always change things for the final, you just can't increase it. So, and most of the time, you're decreasing it in ways because there's turnover in the last two months or whatever. So, I guess, if you guys wanted to, we could schedule a June 3rd meeting if you guys wanted to, or if you guys are comfortable, just put it on the regular meeting for June 10th, and then we've got June 24th and June 30th. So, even if we cancel that special meeting on June 3rd, we're still looking at three meetings.
Two possibly.
Or two possibly.
If we do it on a regular council meeting.
Counsel, do you feel that the format that we followed right now has been able to, we do this methodically, and Randy continues with it, we can continue, or do you want to have a special meeting?
And as we start early like we have, you know, we hash through each page like this. I think it helps because, you know, once you get past page 31, unless there's changes, we really don't have to go back to it. So, after today, we've pretty much gone through everything.
Left of grants.
Yeah, the only thing left is grants, and that's money in, money out. There shouldn't be a whole lot of questions in grants.
I don't think of a special meeting. If we need it, we can still have a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys want to.
Just thought on adopting it on the 10th, if we have a problem, we can always move it to the 24th, 28th. Ray, are you okay with the 10th?
Either 1/24th or the 10th, and then we'll go there, we'll post it both ways. So, something comes up, we can always have it on the 2nd, so we'll do that. Randy's done a good job. I mean, we've gone over this, last year, we actually were under a real, more restricted budget. We were real tight, and we made it and are actually spending a couple extras to try and keep things going, the roads that we have done. So, he's done a good job. It's a conservative, good budget.
Thanks again, Randy.
No fuss.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to new business, counsel.
All right, that's good. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Maxwell, you with us still?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business, item A, discussion possible action regarding bid results for the canopy of the library project, possible award, manager alley.
Okay, in your packets, there were two bids. We went out for a grant for the library, and we had, our estimate was around 50 to 60,000 dollars is what we were projecting for this project. Can you tell them how much was our local share on it? Anything over, was it 50 or 60?
No, no, it's 100%.
On the canopy?
Yeah.
On the canopy grant.
Yeah.
They had a top on it of 60.
I thought we had a match.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is, it is 50. It is 50, sorry. Sorry, I was thinking of that.
Okay, so we had a top of 50,000 on the grant, but what we had, we had two bids come in. One came from DW Lusk, their bid was 60, now both of these numbers I'm giving you is without tax, 61,337. We had another company called Point Construction come in, and their bid was 37,364. We wrote the bid specs open enough where we could get the contractors to tell us what they thought was the best. We gave them guidelines in our bid specs of what we were expecting as far as canopy, the size, and stuff like that. But as far as the type of lights, the gauge, and how they were going to approach it, was up to the contractors. I'm recommending we go with DW Lusk for 61,337 plus the tax, and here's some of the reasons DW Lusk, in their bid, actually bid to remove, and you can look in your packets, and I think if you could see it, I'm going to show you, I don't know, and I'm trying to show the public too. Here's a conceptual drawing of what they're looking at. You could see it's following the existing roofline of the library, it's doubling the handicap ramp up where it's a real shallow thing with your main entrance on this west side of the library where our parking lot is. So, anyway, with that in mind, and I don't know if you guys can see it, but I have, anyway, here's some of the reasons I'm recommending DW Lusk. They're going to remove an existing masonry retaining wall and footing, about 66 linear feet. If you recall at the library, there's that ramp, the handicap ramp with the block wall where they have the mural painted on it, they're going to remove that. That's not going to have anything to do with this structure. And they're going to put some new pillars, concrete pillars with four-by-four footings into the ground and build a new structure, like a self-standing structure, to support this great big lean-to. It's actually, they bid a, I think it was 14 by, bear with me, I'm sorry, I wrote a-
14 by four by 12, right?
No, I was looking for the length of the canopy.
46 long.
14 by 46, 14 feet by 46 long canopy. They put down, and in the, I'm going to read a couple of these things again for the benefit of the public. Remove existing masonry retaining wall and footing approximately 66 linear feet. Remove existing entrance, concrete apron, stairs, sidewalk approximately 500. Legally disposable related construction to bleed. Then the next section that really concerned me is, they're going to form, place, and finish 450 square feet of four-inch, 3,000 pound concrete reinforced with four, number four rebar, 24-inch centers, four-inch six, on four-inch six compacted granular base. They're going to turn down the edges, 24 inches deep by 12 inches wide with two number five rebars. So, everywhere you see the open face, they'll actually have a 24 inch deep. Then they put hand trule, the construction joints and broom it, which is pretty much standard. The canopy concrete piers, they're going to install four, four-by-four by 12-inch, 3,000 pound column piers with number five rebar, 12 inch on centers, with a four three-quarter by 18 inch anchor bolt. So, this is going to be a self-standing structure. Then they've actually specced in here the length of the canopy, and the gauge of the roofing, and the gauge of the soffit, and the lighting was immaterial, there's just three exterior lights. So, that's the proper way, in my opinion, to do a canopy. The other guys came, Point Construction, I don't know, but they came the day the bid was due, about two or three hours before it was open, walked in, and didn't do any research, and looked at their proposal. Their proposal shows bolting to the existing wall, lean-to canopy, and you could see their picture, they're going to try and tear out just the ramp between the wall and the building and replace it, and then tear in pieces of concrete and tie into that ramp without making a double-length ramp. So, the entrance would still be over on the north side, but my biggest concern is, they're going to tie to an existing wall. I don't know myself if that wall's got what size footing, if it's grounded, so, I mean, we're comparing two different types of attempts, or two different types of approaches to this project. And with the little experience that I have in building, I wouldn't want to put a canopy and a structure on a wall that I don't even know if it's got grout in it, or if the footing's six inches deep, because it's just a little four-foot, three-foot wall, and they want to attach a structural component to that.
And make it a load-bearing wall.
Yeah, and make it a load-bearing wall to support a wind. Well, if we get a 70 mile an hour wind, it concerns me drastically.
Yeah.
Okay, wind. So, with that in mind, I'm recommending that we don't go with a low bid, but we go, because we did get two bids, these were the only two bids, and in my judgment, we did check with the state, we followed our procurement procedures, they did not have a problem with us not taking the low bid, as long as we have justification. So, I recommend we go with DW Lusk for 64,762.67, which includes the tax, where it will be a freestanding structure, and done, in my opinion, the way we want it. The grant is for 50,000 dollars, I think it's worth us paying the difference to do it right, because I just don't have a good feeling about attaching something to an existing wall. It's not the way you do it. And it was, it wasn't studied, they came up the day before the bid, two or three hours, and hand wrote a bid, nothing jive too good in my mind. But that's my recommendation.
Counsel, any questions? Manager Alley, I reviewed those bids too, and I don't have any construction experience, but looking at the proposal put forth by DW Lusk, their proposal through my very inexperienced eyes just seemed more complete, and I think if we're going to look long-term and to keep the structure nice, I just felt more comfortable with that bid. Council members, did you review it? Do you have any input?
What will permits cost?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to charge many permits?
No, I told them we'd waive it because it's going to come right back to us anyway, so there's no use in passing it on. And we're going to be over budget, over that grant, so the permitting and the expected fees would be included in what we do, so they wouldn't have any.
So, we don't anticipate any soil testing or anything like that?
No, I don't see any soil testing.
Okay, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like emotionally award the contract to-
DW Lusk.
For the library.
Okay, I got a motion, and I have a second. Counsel, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, we'll move on to new business, item B, discussion of possible action regarding agreement of Callie Jensen to provide personal training for the Holbrook Fitness Center chair raise. Go ahead and tell us what you know about it.
This agreement's the same as we have with several individuals in the center, which Jensen would like to be a personal trainer, and she is willing to pay the 25 dollars a month, the rent that we charge, and provide liability insurance coverage. I recommend approval of the agreement.
Counsel, any comments? Any thoughts?
It'll be approved, we'll have-
I have a motion from Councilman Carlyle, and a second from Councilman Tyler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to item C, resolution 14-09, policy adopting use of alcohol at the Holbrook Volunteer Fire Department buildings. Manager Alley?
If I might, Chief Simpson requested that we could give you a little further information on this, so with your permission, I'd like, if it's all right, to allow Chief Simpson to give you, they held another meeting, he had some more concerns with different personnel at the fire department, so with that, Chief Simpson?
What we would like to do is, at the last meeting, we talked about setting some dates, particular dates. We would like to be able to, we sort of control who comes in and out of that building. We set the schedule for who uses the building, the state uses the building, the college uses the building, firemen use the building, and we sort of control that. At the last meeting, we talked about specific dates of the use of alcohol, and I'd like to bring two proposals to you. The first one is that you allow the fire department to set those dates, not to lock them into a particular date, because there are times when, for example, on the 4th of July, when we do our fundraiser, with the permission of Manager Alley and whoever happens to be the manager. That would be proposal number one. Proposal number two would be to lease the building to the fire department, and let us police ourselves.
Chief Simpson, the last time that we met, we sent you with some very specific directives to me with your officers. It's my understanding you haven't yet met with your officers.
Is that true? But I talked with several of them, and really what I asked Manager Alley to do tonight was just to be on the table, was to be on the table until we could come up with some sort of reachable agreement between the firemen and the city.
Well, I think the directive that we gave you was to reach a very reasonable agreement, and I would also support tabling that for Manager Alley, what do you think's reasonable, Chief Simpson, what do you think's reasonable? Because I do, you know, again, this is the volunteer fire department, and I think some input is important from these guys, and I know them all, and some of them drink, some of them don't, but I think some very clear guidelines, and I don't think ambiguity is really the key here. I think we need to be very specific.
And I think, like I said, we just hadn't had time. We did push this through on just the Christmas season stuff. I think tabling it would be a little bit more in line to give us a little bit more time. We're trying to rush it through. I don't feel comfortable with it, because if they're not comfortable, I don't want to force them to have something they don't want, but I want, on the other hand, I want to protect the city, because there is some concerns. I don't want to lease a building, because that just came up, because there's still city firemen, so I have issues there. So, we have some concerns that we need to work out, so I think a table would be in order. I mean, it's been that way for 60, 70 years, so it's not like we need to rush in to make mistakes.
So, table it with no definite timeline, just until you feel that you've got enough going on to come up with a proposal.
I think that would be good.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
I'll make motion to table item C.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, a second, to table item C. All in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries. Let's move on then to item D, discussion possible action regarding extending the allowance of a police officer to take his vehicle home to his residence in Joseph City for a period of an additional three months. Manager Alley?
As you recall, and I'll let Chief Jackson, we put a specific date on the officer that went to Joe City on his thing, well, we put that on our calendars, that date has passed or came up right now. So, with that, I think the chief requested that we, until the new, three new police get off FDO, which is the end of August, we'd like permission to extend that same thing to allow that officer to take his car to Joe City. Is that correct, Randy?
Correct.
So, but you guys did put a timeframe on it at your meeting when you made your motions, and so I just-
And this, this just isn't a police officer, this is actually the detective, so he is subject to call-out, and it makes no sense to let him drive a civilian car home, and if something happens, he has to come all the way to the PD, get his car, and then go all the way to the scene, and it doesn't make any sense to us. So, we'd just like to extend that until we get the new guys on to relieve the pressure, until we can get someone else in there.
Probably should have a motion to extend that last week.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to extend this officer's building.
Three minutes.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second?
I don't.
Okay, Councilman Maxwell, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Here's a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Doc, Councilman Maxwell.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, I have a motion and a second then to providing another three-month extension for a police officer to continue residing in Joseph City, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, any nays? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, moving on, no executive session that I know of.
Don't forget the-
I'm coming to that, and I do have a call of the audience. City Council welcomes public comment at this time for items not on the agenda, and there's a three-minute item, so-
That's a canvas for the election, too.
And that's, do I do that after the call, or that's a special meeting?
Yeah, you can do it, look down the ground, they'll walk towards you.
Okay.
He waited it.
Okay, I will entertain three minutes from a community member, Ed Heward. Topic is Chief Jackson, and go ahead, you understand some of the guidelines, Mr. Heward?
Yeah, I'm just here to relate my personal experience that I had recently with the chief. Last week, I lost a family member, one of my dogs, and obviously, I was pretty distraught over that. I went up to the Humane Society to pay the bill for having my dog put to sleep, and had occasion to go back in and take a look at some of the dogs that were in there to replace the animal that I lost, and I found that our chief of police was- And I found that our chief of police was, uh, there taking over the duties of Merle, our humane officer in the pound, rather than taking somebody else away from their duties. He stepped in and took that position, and cleaned the kennel, and fed the dogs, and I was quite impressed with the chief. And I want him to know that I've recognized it, and I thank him for it. I also had another interesting thing happen to me this morning that relates to the chief. A good friend of mine named Stanley Freeland took a fall at the Safeway this week, and he wasn't hurt, fortunately, obviously a little bruised, but he went home and went about his business, and a few hours later, some officers showed up at his house to do a welfare check on him, make sure that he was okay. To me, that's the kind of law enforcement that I like to have in my community, and I want everyone to know that I appreciate that very much. My compliments, chief.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Very good. Okay, then, we'll move on to, and lump together, uh, first, we'll move on to claims payment approval for Walt's hardware, but I think I will wait on that, and if, if I may take the liberty of pushing the canvassing vote first?
Yeah.
So, so we don't lose Councilman Carlisle? So this is, uh, an item that was, an addendum to it for canvass the election. Clark Reyes, would you like to discuss that?
I just need you to approve the official abstract to vote. There was 278 yes votes for the proposition, 100, and 69 no votes. This is the budget override.
Okay, so counsel has the canvas merely approves, verifies the election results.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Nearly 10% of the ballots were, were rejected. Is there, what would be the most common reason why ballots would be rejected?
Because most of the ballots that were returned were early ballots, and they didn't follow the directions, and put them in a blue envelope so we could verify signatures. And these election results are really, I mailed out 780 early ballots.
Did you say they didn't put them in there?
There's a half a data that you have to find. That's most of the rejected, and then there were some who voted, who wrote on their ballot, and various other things.
Okay, do I hear a motion for the approval of the canvas of the election?
Certainly.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the, uh, election results and canvassing process, uh, say aye. Aye. Any nays? None opposed, uh, motion carries. Now we'll move on to, uh, claims payment approval for Walt's hardware. Councilman Carlisle accuses himself, uh, for the amount of $1,276.88. Are you with us, Councilman Maxwell?
Yep.
Okay, so a claims payment approval for Walt's hardware, $1,276.88. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, oh, I forgot a motion, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed, motion carries. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.